Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call the order of regular city council meeting for Monday, July 21st, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is our opening ceremony, which consists of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members who have given their lives for our country. If everyone would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, if you take role.
Mayor Jacobs?
Here.
Mayor Protam Dole?
Here.
Councilmember Hughes?
Here.
Councilmember Witt?
Here.
Councilmember King?
Here.
Councilmember Dole?
Here.
Councilmember Karafodis?
Here.
You have a quorum of seven.
Thank you. Item four is our approval of the agenda.
Mayor?
Councilmember Witt?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Monday, July 21st council meeting agenda as presented.
Support. Support from Mayor Protam Dole. Comments from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. We have no recognitions, no state or county officials, no presentations, no community events, no communications. Item 10 is a public hearing on the sale of a city property. We do have Mr. Miller here, but basically this is for a vacant lot. It's a 16-foot lot on Arcola that the neighbor or the property right next door would like to purchase. So with that, I would open it up, the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on property purchase on Arcola? Okay, I will close that public hearing. Item 11 is our consent agenda.
Mayor?
Councilmember Witt?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A1 and 2 as presented.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Hughes. Discussion from table? From public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Action items. Item one is sale of city property that we just had a public hearing on. Again, this is on, excuse me, on Arcola, and it's a 16-foot lot that the city has been maintaining, I believe, since a long time ago. And we have really no use, we can't build on it, so with that, a motion is in order. Mayor Protam Dole?
I motion to approve the attached ordinance for the sale of parcel 35-015-05-0449-001, vacant Arcola Street to Hassan Earth?
Okay.
1060 Arcola, Garden City, Michigan, 48135 for $1,000.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Karafodis. Comments from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes 7-0. Item two is the 2025 right of first refusal of purchase. Mr. Miller?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This is our annual right of first refusal tax foreclosure from Wayne County. We get a list each year, and the city has offered the right of first refusal on the list of properties that are delinquent in taxes, and they have what is called redemption period, and so we're in the redemption period to acquire property via this program, which we call the Neighborhood Stabilization Program also. So there is one property, we did get a list with four on there, but we only want to acquire one of the four. Two of them are vacant lots, and the other is an occupied structure, and we don't usually purchase occupied structures, and we leave that to the county to do the final foreclosure. Also, that occupied structure in the redemption period had a large lien on it also, $135,000 lien, and so we didn't want to acquire more debt and then might not be able to sell that to our contracted HB SNAP program to renovate the structure and get it reoccupied. So through our, kind of our process of elimination, we look at all the properties and try to identify the ones that we can, of course, take that from a blighted state to a renovated state as soon as possible, and the property on Inkster, 2061 Inkster, is that property, and we would like to get your approval to acquire that. And then in turn, once we get it from Wayne County, we'll convey the property to HB SNAP for the renovation of the property.
Okay, thank you. Motion is in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember King?
I move to approve the purchase of 2061 Inkster from Wayne County, right of first refusal in amount not to exceed $15,638.36.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Witt. Discussion from table?
Mayor?
Councilmember Karafodis?
I just have one question for Matt. The vacant land, what happens to it? Does that go to the county?
Yes, it would be returned to the county.
Have we ever purchased vacant land to resell to builders in our city that want to build homes?
Well, these, one of them is not accessible, it's kind of a landlocked lot.
Okay, like mine.
I think you know about those.
Yes, I do.
And then the other lot was, is not buildable either, so we didn't want to do anything with it, so.
Thank you.
We did purchase in the past, right? Because we had that, the old farm market on Warren, I believe was vacant, so we have purchased empty lots before.
And if we find a buildable lot or something like that, I would do that for sure, and we've bid out the sale of vacant, I think we had three homes built before, so with Borg builders, so.
That's what I was wondering, okay, thanks.
Further comments from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item three is special land use for Inkster Road.
Nope.
Nope.
Zoning.
Oh, I missed one. Sorry about that. Item three, zoning ordinance amendment, section 154.165. Mr. Ortega?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Before you tonight is a proposed zoning ordinance amendment regarding the hours of operation for marijuana retailers. The current zoning ordinance does not allow medical marijuana provisioning centers or adult-use marijuana retail facilities to operate on Sundays. Based on feedback from current operators and the public, there have been requests to allow facilities to open on Sundays. The planning commission directed the administrative staff to draft an amendment language that would allow marijuana retail facilities to operate from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Sundays. So on July 10th, the planning commission held a public hearing regarding these proposed amendments. At the hearing, there were no negative comments or concerns raised by residents or property owners. After the hearing, the planning commission approved a motion that recommends that city council approve the proposed amendment. So before you tonight are several options. One, you could grant approval of the proposed language that would allow marijuana retail facilities to operate from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Sundays. You could deny the proposed amendment, or you could request the planning commission to consider other revisions that could address this issue. I can take any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Motion is in order.
Mayor?
Mayor Protam Dole?
Is this up for discussion? I would like to extend these hours.
You have to make a motion first.
First we make a motion, then we can discuss it.
I motion to approve the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, section 154.165.G2.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Hughes. Okay, discussion from table?
Mayor?
Mayor Protam Dole?
I'd like to go with the number two hours of operation. Medical marijuana provision center and adult-use retail may only operate, open business between 9:00 AM and 9:00 PM.
9:00 AM and 9?
On Sunday.
9:00 AM to 9:00 PM?
On Sunday, yes, sir.
Okay.
Mayor?
Hold on, hold on. Okay, we'll discuss it, and then we'll see if the supporter wants to do that. Councilmember Karafodis?
Are other facilities like this open on Sundays?
Yes, the planning commission did look at other facilities in the area.
What time are they open till?
I believe the ones in Inkster are open till 9:00 PM. I can't recall when they are open. I could find that out in a second if you like.
Yeah, I'm just curious, like other national chains like Liv or any of them that are close to us in Westland, are they open that late?
Yeah, typically they're open to either 9:00 AM or 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. On Sunday now, we're talking Sunday only.
Sunday only, is there a reason that we came up with the 6:00 PM? I'm just wondering.
There was just deliberation amongst the members. I think they thought that was a compromise in terms of going from no hours of operation instead of going all the way to nine.
But was there anything brought up, like why that would be negative after 6:00 PM? Our police chief is right there, is there any issues with other cities after?
The planning commission didn't mention any negative issues. It was just a matter of, you know, it's kind of typical of the commission where we try and turn things up a little bit at a time rather than go from one right to the other, but as noted, they are open on, from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM in adjacent communities.
Yeah, I know in the past, with previous councils and that, there was concern, and they wanted to do a slow roll into it as it went, and I think that was the compromise back then for doing it till 6:00 PM. I don't think we ever changed it.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Dole.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Are there any other businesses where we determine what hours they're allowed to be open?
So technically, any special land use does have the, when it's being brought for review, can, the city can restrict its hours based on the level of activity. We normally don't actually go to that level of detail, but the city, planning commission, and then thus the council, when you receive special land uses, you have that option to do that.
But to your knowledge, Garden City does not currently have businesses where the council or planning commission has restricted their hours?
To the best of my knowledge, no.
Thanks.
Mayor?
And forgive me, I'm sorry, actually, they are, they do close at 6:00 PM on Sunday. Forgive me, they're open 9:00 PM, Monday through, sorry, I just want to get this right for you. So in Inkster, they are open 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Sunday, but let me check Westland for you. See, I do believe Westland is the one that might be open.
I know they have a national chain there also, that's why I was asking.
In Westland, I believe. Yes, 10 to 9 on Westland.
Mayor Protam Dole?
Yeah, I just feel we have a terrible reputation of helping these businesses that come into the city, in their opinion, running them through hoops unnecessary and things like that. This would be a good opportunity to change our past reputation, and we're benefiting from this business. It's like cutting your nose off to suit your face. I don't understand why we would limit that free money.
And I guess from a commercial market standpoint, the most direct, obvious competition to this facility would be the facility in Westland down the street, which is, excuse me, which is open from 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM on Sundays.
Right, and this business is already somewhat hampered by their location. They're out of sight, they're not on the main road, haven't heard any issues of problems at all, it's just win-win for us.
Okay, Councilmember Hughes, Mayor Protam Dole wanted to change the, yeah, the amendment to go to 9:00 PM. Are you all right with that?
I'm fine with moving it to 9:00 PM.
Okay, so you got, we have to vote on this one?
My support.
Point of order, what the option would be, it'd be to recommend a different change to the planning commission, so it would go back to planning for their review on it. So what I would do is, I'd recommend rescind the motion, and then if you'd like to make a motion, you know, for the?
Yes.
I was under the pressure, council had to find a way, why would it go back to the planning commission and come back to us again?
You do have the right to do that. We can make a, the motion can state that.
Okay.
Once a consideration, they took the recommendation from the planning commission, and then they're discussing it and making changes as necessary, so.
Because you're not changing the substance of the, the amendment is to change the act to allow hours on Sunday, you're changing the detail. Yes. So in that case, I think that's one way to interpret the picture.
Yes. Okay.
Well, in that case, I would say then if you'd be okay with amending it to 9 o'clock.
Yes, I support amending it.
Okay, so the ordinance would now be from 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM, correct?
Correct.
On Sunday only?
Yes.
Okay, and we had Mayor Protam Dole make the motion, and Councilmember Hughes support it. Okay, further comments from table? From the public?
I have one.
Oh, Councilmember Karafodis?
Just clarifying what Councilmember Dole said, you're talking about cutting their nose off to spite her face. You mean because the more money they make, the more money we make in tax money from the state?
Exactly.
Okay, that's all.
Further comments from table? From the public?
I need to ask.
So if I'm understanding right, you're changing the time to 9 to 6, or 9?
We're changing, we're changing, right now, they're not allowed to be open on Sunday. The original amendment was to go from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. We're now going from 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
So you're changing the time they can operate?
Correct.
And you, and you didn't do that before the other hearing, before the board, other order?
The other hearing went before the planning commission.
Right, but you're changing that?
Correct.
You're changing what they approved?
Correct. That doesn't mean that that was brought up at that time.
Of course not, because it was brought up to 10 to 9, that's what they approved, and you're changing it?
Yes, sir.
It's like the liquor thing, you can't buy liquor until, what, 12 on Sunday, I think? So it is, okay.
Thank you. Okay, further comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Item four, special land use for Inkster Road. Mr. Ortega?
This application tonight is regarding to the ability to establish a carryout restaurant at the southwest corner of Inkster and John Hawk Roads. The property is a single lot at 1847 Inkster Road, a four-tenant, one-story commercial building and associated parking lot was recently constructed on the site, and the applicant is now proposing to establish a carryout restaurant in one of the tenant spaces, which would be on the north end of the building, in its tenant space with the address of 1859 Inkster Road. So the site is owned C1, local business, and in the C1 district, carryout restaurants do require special land use review and approval. So on July 10th, the planning commission held a public hearing regarding the proposed renovation, or regarding the proposed special land use, and at that hearing, there were no comments or concerns raised by residents or property owners. The commission considered all the issues and have recommended that city council grant special land use approval with the conditions that there shall only be one carryout restaurant permitted on the site, and that the applicant comply with the conditions of site plan approval. At the same meeting that night, planning commission did actually grant site plan approval contingent upon the applicant providing a revised site plan with a couple details added regarding storage of the grease containers outside, and actually, in this case, the planning commission chose to limit the hours of operation for the facility from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So the council has the following options this evening. You may decide that no further discussion is needed after tonight, and then proceed with planning commission recommendation. Council would grant special land use approval with the condition that no other carryout restaurant should be established on the property at 1847 Inkster. Option two would be you can delay the proposed project and discuss the carryout restaurant further at another meeting and request this be added on a future meeting, or the council can deny the proposed use.
Motion is in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember King?
I move that the city council has determined further discussion is no longer necessary, that the city council concurs with the planning commission's recommendation, and that the city council grant final approval for the carryout restaurant special land use on the property at 1847 Inkster Road and the unit at 1859 Inkster Road, and the condition that no carryout restaurant shall be established on the property at 1847 Inkster Road.
Support. Support from Mayor Protam Dole. Further comments from table? Councilmember Dole?
Are there only two addresses at that property even though there's four?
The other units do have their own individual addresses. The other three units have individual addresses. The property is 1847, I believe the barber shop on the south side is 1847, there's a pharmacy with its own address, there's a vacant unit with its address, and then this unit is 1859 Inkster on the north side.
Okay, and that would be the only unit?
Correct.
That would be approved?
That is correct.
Mayor?
Councilmember Karafodis?
This is a restaurant?
It's a carryout restaurant.
Why are we limiting their hours?
Because planning commission had discussions based on the characteristics of Inkster Road, based on the C1 local businesses, and the proximity of single-family residences to the rear of the site. They thought just to limit the level of activity might be appropriate, and the property, the business owner was at the meeting, and the business owner was actually very amiable to having it closed at that time.
My other question is about parking, so if you go further on Inkster Road towards, just a little bit further, there's crazy amount of parking, like where the hamburger place is and all those things that were approved, so there's how many spaces for four businesses?
I believe it's 19, and that is actually another reason that the planning commission recommended and restricted no more carryout restaurants, because they have more level of activity while they have more vehicle turnover. Certain times of day, they will obviously have a lot more vehicles on site, but based on the fact that the other uses are already in there, and the other uses that would be permitted in the other three units, the number of parking spaces would actually work out. If a second carryout restaurant was established, that would definitely get it to a high level of activity around lunchtime and dinnertime.
That's what I was gonna say, if there's 20 spaces and each place has two people working, right there, that's eight people, so that takes it down to 12 spaces for all four, all four businesses, right?
That's correct.
I know there's a big concern with the parking just another block down, and I've heard plenty of residents complaining that, you know, there's parking on their street at all hours, that kind of thing, so.
Yeah, and that's another reason for the hours restriction, trying to make sure that no other.
What's our current rule when it comes for business per parking?
Well, technically, any use that's established in the city has a minimum number of parking spaces, it must be off, be on-site, off-street, but then technically, depending on where they are in the city, there might be standard public parking available for any person. So when the uses are reviewed and approved, we make sure they meet that off-street minimum requirement, so these are minimum requirements, and then it just comes to pass that, you know, if something gets very popular, you know, you can't really attribute their characteristic of they become a very popular location, and then they come into that.
What's the minimum?
We work with them, becomes an ordinance enforcement issue, they, in terms of making sure they're, they aren't generating parking that is going to be violating the adjacent streets.
What is our minimum per business for?
Well, within the, for carryout restaurants, it's two, one for every employee, plus, I believe it's two for every 50 square feet of carryout waiting area, and so that we look at the square footage of the floor plan to calculate the number of spaces for that, and then similarly with the other uses, like with the pharmacy use, with the barber use, barber use is based on the number of chairs?
In and out, yeah.
And that sort of thing.
Okay.
It's gonna be tight, basically, the next, the only thing that really will be able to go into that third unit will be an office use, because the office use requires one parking space for every 300 square feet of net floor area, so based on the size of the unit, they're only gonna require three parking spaces?
That's the fourth unit is office space?
Correct.
Okay.
Basically, when they come in, if they came in with something that was a little bit more intense and had a higher parking demand, I would have to deny it, and because based on the parking and the size of the building and the size of the parking spaces is just how the mix of uses is permitted.
Is we're gonna hope this carryout restaurant's really good and they get really busy?
Yeah.
What kind of carryout is it?
I believe they're initially, they're called Beirut Bites.
Beirut Bites?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments?
One more question, just a quick one.
Councilmember Dole?
So in that fourth unit, you would review that when they come in for a sample?
Absolutely, yes.
At that point, correct?
Absolutely, in any, in any, the mix of the buildings, businesses within the building of pre-existing business indicates what is allowed on the site, because technically, that's always in the others, and so that's how it's done.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, further comments from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Item five is Phase 2 of the Folkers, Folkers Commons Plan Development, and this is just a call for a public hearing.
Mayor?
Councilmember Dole?
I move to schedule a public hearing on August 18th, 2025, for the proposed Phase 2 of the Folkers Commons Planned Development Project for vacant lot on Pardo Avenue, parcel
Support.
Support from Councilmember Karafodis. Comments from table, and again, this is just on the public hearing.
Mayor?
Councilmember Karafodis?
This is the property of Jane, the old Orin property?
This is the property in between the old, well, the current Comcast utility building and the medical building on the west.
Okay, that's what I thought, thank you.
Further comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Item six is lease agreement for It Takes a Village. Mr. Gibbons?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. You know, as council knows, since last year, the beginning of fiscal year last year, the Recliff Center, we had to reevaluate our priorities there and sort of change the footprint and find ways to make it much more financially viable community operation, and we made cuts, but also as part of that, we sought to seek new revenues for the building in order to sort of generate a new way of looking at it so that it could be sustainable for the future, and part of that plan is to continue to use part of it as, of course, our community center, our recreations, and make it the gem of the community we hope it can be, but the other part of it is to take part of that. Fortunately, we have an excellent renter in town over at our Maplewood Center, It Takes a Village. They operate, you know, an educational center for mostly preschool children, but also some school-aged children, many different activities there, that we've had a good relationship with them. During a course of a meeting, we had a conversation about them needing some more space. We offered some at the Radcliffe Center to see if they were interested. Conversations took place resulting in an offer of a lease, which is attached to this council packet. It is for about 6,000 square foot, square feet of the building. It produces a progressive amount from starting at $90,000 and then leading to about $132,000 over five years, and it'll just add some revenue, but also using part of the building for the children of this community in this area in a way I think that is close to as possible as it was intended. And so we're asking tonight for approval of that lease. This lease has been vetted by our city attorney and written by our city attorney.
Thank you.
I believe that, you know, it's been carefully thought through by both parties, and I'm recommending its approval.
Motion is in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember Whit.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the attached lease agreement for the described space at the Radcliffe Community Center.
Support? Support from Mayor Protem Dole. Further comments from table? From the public?
Mayor?
Councilmember Karafotis.
Have all the fine details been worked out already, like their hours of operation and what they're affecting in Radcliffe and all those kinds of things?
Yes, we've had some discussion over all those particulars. Certainly, there's room within the lease to establish building rules, as, you know, we believe how the operations will occur between the city and them, but also with some flexibility to make sure that the interests of our community center are taken care of, and that's the priority, but also making them successful so they can be a long-term renter and benefit from the property. But, you know, as much as one can, we've worked out the details.
And this is all that one hallway and the courtyard?
Correct.
Okay, that's it.
Further comments from table? From public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Item seven is Radcliffe Center Projects Contractor Agreement. I'll call Parks and Rec Director Ms. Erica Smith.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. I'm back again with a contract for Radcliffe. This is part of our grant. We're getting near the end of things. I'm looking for approval for a contract with all phases to complete three key projects. There also is a piece in there to allow them to take on some of the project management at an hourly rate. As we've got a lot of contractor projects going on, sometimes they lead to new projects. Coordinating between all of these contractors really requires somebody who knows the building well, having the contractor experience, and all phases has been working on this for years and I think knows the building as well as anybody. So tonight, I'm looking for approval on three specific projects to bring them to completion. And I do want to say that all of this is also guided by our Radcliffe Committee. So all the projects are really worked out in the committee. We've identified them, and now it's really just the action steps to bring these all through to fruition and really tie together all of the work. And this will not exceed $200,000. So I don't have those questions.
Okay, we'll open, motion is in order, and then we can discuss.
Mayor?
Councilmember Karafotis.
Recommend to approve all phases ceiling and carpentry as contractor to complete the community kitchen, gymnasium, and fitness room, along with project management work to complete project punch list items and an amount not to exceed $200,000.
Support? Support from Mayor Protem Dole. Comments from table?
Mayor?
Councilmember Dole.
The paper, the end of this, the bid proposal, you know, it has a total of the $200,000 on it. Do you, and does the committee have estimates for this? I mean, do you kind of know ballpark what each line item's going to be?
Yes, and there will be, the committee will really be overseeing each of those. We know the projects, we're still waiting on some numbers, but there's essentially budget number, you know, for each of those, and there's still an approval step that the committee is overseeing.
Okay, and after this amount, how much is left of the grant?
Well, it's changing every day. I mean, there's about, I would say, $85,000 to $90,000 of the key projects, which are really ordering fitness equipment, and some of the completion of the door fobs that were all identified, and some of the signage. Those are the key things. We're waiting on pricing for the signage and the equipment. I mean, there's a long list of other wish list items, but it's really priority-driven now, and, you know, the timeline, the county really wants us to complete spending end of September, because they're looking to take any money back, so we're not going to let that happen. We've got too many things that we'd want to get.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments? From the public?
I don't have a problem with this, but it's not about closing the barn door after the horse. By the way, you did that over at the power station, too. They got a project manager at the end. Should have been at the beginning on both projects. Then maybe it would have been a lot smoother.
Thank you. Further comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Okay, we have no other business. Item 13 is public comment, non-agenda items only. I'd like to call up Mr., and I apologize, Schleszanska? Or Miss, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name's Magdalena Schleszanska. Sorry, this is our first time at a city council meeting, so we've both never spoke, but my fiancee's going to do more of the talking, because I'm not good with the vocabulary use for the sewage problem that we are here to discuss, if that's okay?
Sure.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Christopher Grunewell speaking on Magdalena Schleszanska's behalf. I know you guys had a lot of issues already with the drainage and the sewer problems. I'm pretty sure multiple, multiple, all types of lawsuits or whatnot down the line with it all, from a few years ago in June with the backups and all that. I'm not asking for a miracle or a humongous favor, it's just that I understand that the resident is responsible for the lateral going into the main, even though if it's in the green belt or if it's under the road. In her case scenario, April 3rd, we had a bad storm, and she's on a very positive grade at her home. Never flooded ever since the home was built, no record of floods. During that storm, I went down in the basement, and there was a couple inches of water. Well, it got to the point where it caused about $23,000 in damage in her basement. When I sent a plumber out there to find out any type of issues, we couldn't get all the way with the snake, couldn't get to the city's tap. Following day, I had the city come out there and run a camera. That process, we discovered that the city's tree on the Boulevard grew roots into the arm, the riser, of where her lateral would meet to the drain. They couldn't determine if it would be the city's responsibility or our responsibility, which I understand, again, we're responsible for anything lateral. What I am kind of confused with is that within about 48 hours of them discovering that, the tree was removed off the Boulevard. The city's tree was removed. So I don't want to, long story short, without, I'm not trying to get a line or offend anyone, but not so many people have $20,000 to take care of this type of repair, let alone, you know, deal with what we've been dealing with at the home since April 3rd. I mean, it's pretty, it's becoming a health and safety issue. I own my own company, I was eligible, you know, I'm in property management maintenance. I was, thank gosh, I was able to mitigate all damages possible that I could within the home, but still, there is, again, severe amount of damage in there around, close to like $20,000, so it was a finished basement. I'm not asking for 100% repair. If so, it'd be amazing, but in this process, there's also been, homes being built across the street. This is, again, sorry to mention the address, it was 29500 Belmore. That's her address.
15 seconds?
Go ahead.
And across the street, there's a lot that was just purchased, and four homes are soon to be built. I understand they're already cutting into the pavement there to run sewer lines, so I didn't know.
That's time.
Counsel, can I give him 30 more seconds?
Absolutely.
Finish his comment?
I'm just asking for, if there's any which way, thank you, sir, I want to know if there's any which way possible to where maybe you guys could help out with the situation in any which shape, way, or form. I mean, $20,000 is this ridiculous amount of price to pay, and again, the city's tree off the Boulevard did cause the issues, and the tree has been removed by the city within 24 to 48 hours, I think, after the fact.
What I'll do is, we'll have DPW go look at it, evaluate, get back with the city manager, and then they'll, someone will get back with you.
Yeah, I spoke, I sent, that was me today.
Okay, yeah, and there's a process for handling claims, and myself and the city.
I have the claims here, I filed it, no response from it. I have pictures, I'm not going to say, I know Public Act 222, responsibility of the factor, and also, I know the city does can claim immunity if they don't maintain or manage their sewers properly. The roots that grew in are in the city's main, and that's where I would figure if that was prevented, this situation would have been prevented. I just wanted to speak on that.
Okay, we'll take a look at it, and somebody will get back with you.
Thank you very much. Sorry, it's my first time, sorry about the time and all that.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is it Mr. L. Bacali? All right, I'm getting better at this.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council members. My name is Marwan Bacali. May I have two questions? I'm a landlord, I have, I own properties in Garden Cities and other cities around this area here as well. First question that I have is regarding the rental certification that we basically do every three years. I noticed probably last year or two, the cost went way higher than it was before. It used to be probably $125 or maybe a little bit more, but now jumped to $350. And this is unique for this city. If you look at the other cities around Garden City, you know, the rental inspection or certification is still the same. So the question is, you know, why the cost went two, three times more than it was before? This, again, you know, this is the first question that I have. I'd like to hear your...
We'll probably answer it at the end.
Okay.
I'll let you get through your questions before your time runs out.
Thank you. The second question regarding, again, a process that I compared between Garden City and Westland, being two cities very, very close to each other. What we had is, in April 29, in one of my properties, you know, the tenant put, you know, a couch outside, and it happened that in that week, it wasn't the trash day week. So as, you know, they pick the trashes, not the trash, the big items, like every other week. It happened the week that the tenant put the item outside, it wasn't the right week. So it was Monday where they pick the trash. The item was noticed on Wednesday, so there was a note or notice put on the door that this item has to be taken in 24 hours. The tenant did not take it 24 hours, you know, the police officer come the next day and, you know, issued the ticket. The first question is, you know, again, I wasn't there and I wasn't notified, so this is, you know, again, it's the process, in my mind, is very, very quick, comparing it, again, to Westland. Westland, if you have an issue like this, they will come and give you 10 days that you have to handle this item. If you don't, they'll come back and give you seven more days and say, if you don't, you're going to get ticketed. I'm not saying, I'm asking for 17 days, but 24 hours is very, very short. And then you basically give the ticket to the landlord, not to the tenant. So if there's a possibility to make it seven days instead of one day, it would be very, very helpful.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions for me?
No, we'll have somebody from ordinance or building department get with the city manager, and we'll have a response for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, further comments? Mr. Jones?
We have a couple of ongoing activities sponsored by the senior center. One is Bunko Day, which is from 12 to 2 o'clock on a second and fourth Monday of every month at Radcliffe Center. Ages 50 and up, $5 per person, prizes awarded for high bunkos, whatever that is. I'm not an expert on bunkos, so I can't...
Neither am I.
High score, second high score, low score, and money cup. Second one is Bingo at the Rec. This is on the first and third Monday of each month. It's from 1 o'clock to 2 o'clock, ages 15 and older, $5 per person. Need to, we encourage people to participate in that. And the third and last one is we're starting to look at sponsoring a community pancake breakfast. It would be on July, or it would be on, I'm sorry, at the Chili Cook-Off in September, on September 27th, from about 9 o'clock to 12 o'clock. We're having a second committee meeting to work on some of the details for this, participating in the Garden City Kiwanis, Garden City Lions, and to some extent, the Garden City Rotary. We've established a price of $10 for most participants, but people under 5 are free. We're having a meeting to further out some of the details of this proposed project this coming Thursday at 1:30 at Straight Farmhouse.
Thank you, sounds good. Further comments? Mr. Mulner?
Just a question, happy for you. How long is it going to take the water department to recover that $6 million? The $3 million they're in debt, and then the $3 million for the fund, contingency fund?
I can get you in my comments.
Okay.
Thank you. Further comments? Hey, no further comments? City managers report?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll start with the most immediate. The $6 million, so it's over that five-year projected water fund plan we came up with, Plant Moran. So it'll be over the course of five years, you know, with good luck, lower costs, maybe it gets faster, but the plan is five years. As far as rental certifications and fees, the fees were up to be proportional to the regulatory purpose. You know, the regulation of rental homes is, has a cost to it. Rental homes within our town, we want them to be habitable and, you know, a benefit to the city, and that takes regulation. And our fees and the costs are, can be directly attributed to the money we spend to regulate those properties. So as far as that concerned, as far as a 24-hour notice, I will look into that. Generally, we give you five business days, but I will, I will check in to see if there was a purpose. Sometimes in emergency circumstances, we can offer a 24-hour notice, we do give a 24-hour notice. Without more particulars, I'll have to look into it and find that out. And then as far as the sewer, most of our decisions on liability come from our insurance company, our adjuster, so I will immediately this week, reach out to our adjuster, speak with them about your particular case, and I'll contact you, and if you hang around for a few minutes after the meeting, I'll gladly speak with you, and we'll get to the bottom of where we're at there. And just on a personal, from Police Department note, Chief Roger Wilks, who was well before my time, passed away this July, of this month, and he was a well-regarded Garden City High School graduate, and, you know, he was way before my time, but I know enough of the old-timers who, when I started, spoke extremely highly of him, and, you know, we lost the former Clerk Shaw Walter and Chief Wilks this year, and they were just pillars, and those people that, even though I came along years after them, had such a great reputation, it's that they exuded it through the people that worked for them, and they passed it on to me to think highly of them. So just condolences to the family, and thanks to his family for his service for our community. And that's all for me tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yes, just a couple, two quick things today. Councilmember Dole mentioned at the last meeting about the school supplies for Rotary. I'm pleased to announce we do have the basket and the bin in City Hall, so we are collecting through September 8th. A couple of big donators came in, there's a few large bags of school supplies in our office already. There's a few large bags of school supplies in our office already. So thank you to those who've already donated. I have some flyers up here that I'll leave out if anyone will want to take one. The other community event coming up, Community Shred Day. So I know I've gotten some questions about, do we have a date for the fall day? It is Saturday, September 6. This location, as the fall one has traditionally been, will be here at City Hall in the parking lot, where you will enter off of Central Street. Same hours as always, 10 a.m. till 1 p.m. Up to five cardboard banker's boxers or paper bags, just be in line by 12:45. We are also going to be taking donations for the Our Home Food Pantry, Prescription Drug Take Back. And I believe I have talked briefly with the chief about doing a cram the cruiser for more school supplies as well. So, and I also have flyers for those out here up front. That's it.
Thank you. And I know we are working on getting the Mobile Secretary of State Office. I'm not sure if we've confirmed with that, but we're working on that one also. Thank you. Mayor Protem Dole?
I've only got one thing. I see some movement on the old Frankies. Do we have any updates on what's going on there?
None that I can give you in detail, but it has made more progress recently than it has in, since 2015. So it's, it's been positively encouraged, but I can send all of council an email a little bit on that progress.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Hughes?
Nothing this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Witt?
Nothing tonight.
Hugh, Councilmember King?
Yeah, just another thank you to the GCPD for the whole Citizens Academy, and special things to Officer Noack. I completed my ride-along this past Saturday. It was definitely insightful. And just another reminder for anybody looking for youth sports, majority of the registrations are wrapping up for, for the fall. Typically, they wrap up early August. So if you're looking for fall sports, definitely check in to register your child.
That's it. Thank you. Councilmember Dole?
Thank you. First, I want to extend our condolences to one of our residents, Sandy Abraham, in her loss recently. And, yeah, we're, we're just, I was very sorry to hear about that. The Goodfellows are having their second annual Christmas in July, this Saturday, at City Park from 3 to, 3 to 9. Lots of bands, good food, the normal stuff at festivals, you know. So come on up and help support Goodfellows so that we can provide Christmas for our kids in the, in the community. We got our department updates in the packet this month, and I just want to say kudos to all the departments because everybody's been really busy, it looks like. And last but not least, I've been walking a lot lately. And I walked past our hospital. So where they tore the building down out in front, it's my opinion that that is a huge safety issue. The fencing is not secure. There's standing water in that huge hole. And they also have, the fencing is over most of the sidewalk, so you're having to walk on uneven ground to get around that. I swear, every time I walk by, I look in that, I look in there and I expect to see something floating in there. So if we could get an update from them and find out, you know, let's try to get that cleaned up. It's on that main street, pretty visible. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Carefotos?
I just have a few things. One thing is kind of in line with what Councilwoman Dole just said. In the coming months, when things slow down for us, we talk about adjusting ordinances or, or changing things. Coming up with some kind of timeline for people that have construction or new businesses. It seems like some, some things take five years to get going. I know our permits have to be renewed every year, but just having some kind of timeline so someone comes in and says, you're going to do this construction progress, program, you have six months to complete it, and, and these are the things, how it has to be done. Because it seems like everything's taking longer and longer, and it just sits there vacant forever. And then the only other thing I had regarding your, your question about the fees for rentals, I know when I first got on council, we talked about increasing those fees for businesses that, we discussed it earlier when we went over the budget, and it is in line with your three-year fee, is the same thing as individual businesses for each year. And it's actually cheaper than individual businesses because you don't get charged for a fire inspection, which all other businesses have to. So rentals are considered a business. So it is in line with all our other things in Garden City, even though it's been increased. Everything's been increased in the last couple of years. So I just wanted to let you know that.
That it?
That was it.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I'll, I'll mention is, and it was brought up before, Chili Cook-Off, September 27th. Plans are being made in lining up bands, hopefully lining up the Secretary of State Mobile Office for that also. So that will be September 27th. And I believe they're looking for volunteers still. Good way to make money for charity of your choice. And that's all the comments I have.
Mayor?
I did forget to mention, I want to thank the Garden City Business Alliance. They did music in the park last Thursday, and I'm not sure the Police Department and the Fire Department are super thrilled. They, they were good. The park was absolutely packed. There was not, there was not an available parking spot in that entire park. That was not what the Business Alliance expected. We did expect more people because it was a better-known group, but kudos to everybody that was there, though. There were no problems, no, just, just nothing. It was a very peaceful, you know, kind of a groovy night going on. So, but again, thanks to them for doing that, and I look forward to the next concert in the park in August.
Okay, thank you. Okay, no more comments from council. I will now take a motion for closed session.
Mayor?
Councilmember Witt?
I'd like to make a motion to move into closed session at 7:56 p.m. to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute pursuant to MCL 15.268H to receive a written legal opinion regarding a Freedom of Information Act request denial appeal.
Support? Support from Councilmember King. Mr. Smith, if you'll take roll call.
Councilmember Witt?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Carefotos?
Aye.
Councilmember Dole?
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dole?
Aye.
Mayor Jacobs?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we will go into closed session.[1041.54]